To call the meeting to order, can I have the roll call please?
Yes ma'am, Mr. Antoine.
Here.
Sorry, sorry. Uh, Mr. Antoine is here, Mrs. Bonnick.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Dr. Demas.
Here.
Mrs. Ikurs.
Here.
I am here. Mr. Young.
Absent.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Support.
Moved by Dr. Demas, supported by Mr. Connor. Were there any questions? Concerns on it? Seeing none, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to public comment. And just as a reminder, you have three minutes. And I have John Beers.
Well, good evening. After attending the community presentations on G-SOPS and following their updates, I appreciate the opportunity to speak about a proposal with great potential for our community. G-SOPS has presented a vision of a green space that connects generations, a place for learning, play, and reflection, enhancing our community and outdoor education. AI and augmented reality will be used to create story trails where visitors can explore the history of the site, buildings, educators, and students. This project could also provide hands-on learning for students. Students could work with G-SOPS volunteers on augmented reality projects to explore the site's historic buildings and those who taught and attended school there, giving Romeo academies and service students a chance to contribute to preserving our educational legacy. Financially, three points stand out. First, the land's value depends on the surrounding market, not Romeo Community Schools improvements. Second, demolishing the old school has reduced and will continue to reduce operational costs by hundreds of thousands of dollars annually, savings that benefit Romeo Community School taxpayers. Third, this property was bought and paid for by former community taxpayers, most of the subject property having been originally paid for for over 150 years ago. Let's focus on three options for the property at 297 Prospect Street, each with different implications for our community's heritage and its future. I want to emphasize that these are options as I see them and have not been shared with G-SOPS leaders. Option one is selling to developer, which I understand could lead to as many as 17 housing units. This would offer no green space or preservation of educational history and provide minimal tax compared to the district's tax base. Option two is to sell the property to G-SOPS at a low cost. Property acquisition and green space development costs would be funded by pledges, gifts, and grants. The third option is to transfer the property to G-SOPS at no cost, enabling immediate green space development. Green space development costs would be funded by pledges, gifts, and grants. You have the opportunity to shape our community's future. While each option has merits, the third, creating a community-driven green space offers the greatest benefit. Unlike private development or low-cost sale of G-SOPS, transferring the property at no cost lets G-SOPS focus on immediately developing an interactive green space that honors Romeo Community Schools' history and educational legacy. Supporting this option would ensure the property remains a community space for education, recreation, and connection aligned with our needs and aspirations. By returning 297 Prospect Street to the community through G-SOPS, the board can preserve our heritage and invest in a sustainable future. I urge you to consider option three, as I have outlined it, and to vote in favor of transferring the property to G-SOPS at no cost so that many supporters and volunteers at G-SOPS can focus on creating a space that will benefit all. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, I don't see anybody else for public comment. We will be moving on to discussion items. Dr. Robinson, do you want to kick off? Or are they just G-SOPS?
Yeah, we got to get their presentation.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. I am not trying to be rude with you looking at the back of my head. This is a workshop meeting, so this is a different meeting than our regular meetings. And this allows the board, regardless of our discussion or our guests, to actually have discussion without trying to look down the normal board. So, we'll have the opportunity for Mrs. Bowlen and Mr. Foligno to make a presentation. The board might have some questions for them, but this is just their opportunity, the group's opportunity in our sequential milestone monthly meetings to update the board on where things are at. I think it's also important to understand that although the board talked about a November 1st deadline, nothing happens on November 1st. There's not a meeting on November 1st. There's not prescribed action in any way on November 1st. It is just simply the final milestone timeline, and this presentation is something leading up to that. So, that's one of the things that I've received, some emails about what's happening on November 1st. It's just a deadline in our monthly milestone meetings. So, November 1st doesn't lead to a final decision either way on this. We had to set a deadline, and that's what it is. All right, so thank you for being here. Mr. Foligno, you want to take over?
Absolutely.
May I distribute the map?
Yes. Sorry, that was my job.
I'll take the slack for you.
I have a few of these.
Yeah.
While we're handing out the map, I think did the printout of the presentation, did you guys get it printed out?
Electronic.
Electronic. Slides two and three are first. All right. Good evening. I'd like to introduce myself, Franco Foligno, and...
Donna Bowlen.
Thank you to the Board of Education for hearing our presentation tonight, and thank you to everyone here who's here to support G-SOPS and our efforts. Tonight's presentation marks a significant milestone in the progress made by both G-SOPS and Board of Education, working together to transform 297 Prospect Street into a green space for our community. So, we are very excited to be here and go into our outline. So, got the introduction out of the way. So, who is G-SOPS? We like to talk about who we are and where our community group is going. Next, under why this place matters, we'll cover the land's roots and history and how we plan to live up to the community's recreational master plan and how the green space will benefit our community. After that, Donna will present the site plan for the green space, which is the map you all have in front of you. Under milestones, milestones report, we'll cover our progress. That's just broken out to these three categories, and that's just the... Last time we were here and we presented, there were a bunch of questions that were gathered, and we pretty much formed that into like a checklist almost, where we've been having monthly meetings with Dr. Robinson and Vicki to just cover our progress. And we've broken it out into the fiscal, acquisition, and developmental maintenance subcategories. Finally, we'll conclude with a quick discussion on legacy and outline our next step.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So, looking at who is G-SOPS, see a lot of the folks there. Present and past, and you see we've got lots of good folks in the room today. Great to see y'all. And, um, so if we talk about all the folks that are involved in G-SOPS, we do have a small leadership team that has been sort of coordinating as we go and communicating, which includes Franco and myself. But all of the folks that are involved, you know, we have many, many donors, and we'll go into a bit more detail about that. But it's not just the folks that are pledging or giving money. You know, there's a lot of people that are, you know, giving their input on the planning and what they would like to see happen there. People who are helping with outreach and doing research. Our events, folks that are, you know, working on events are, you know... We were in the Beach Festival Parade, and we've had a couple of big events and had the garden walk. And just, just people who tell us they want it to happen, you know, are not necessarily volunteering or donating, but saying, you know, please, we want to use this space. And all of those folks together are the future stewards of the property. I mean, we've got a really dedicated bunch of people. And also, I want to give a big shout out to kind of our primary partner is the Four County Community Foundation. They are our fiduciary, and without Four County, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I think a lot of folks in the community really appreciate everything they do for all of us. As far as the numbers, we have a contact list that has 420 people on it. And that email comes out that goes out to over 400 people. 153 people have donated or pledged. And of those, to talk about those pledges, and we've been reporting on that every month in our milestones report, but to date, we have $377,000 pledged and donated today. That's 361,000 pledged and 16,000 has been donated directly to the Community Foundation. And looking at how those add up, and, you know, especially when we're thinking about the folks that are going to be involved in the future, those $25, $50 donations really matter a lot. And we have, that is our bronze level, which is up to $500. There's 81 of those, and that adds up to $9,000. The silver is the 500, up to 5,000. We have 59 of those, and that totals 55,000. Gold is $5,000, up to 50,000. We've got $97,000 in the gold pledges. And then platinum, 50 to 150. Diamond, 150 to end up one each in each of those. And those were the pledges that were so important in getting us started. The $150,000 from Heideberg Chevrolet that picked us off, 50,000 from Ruth Heideberg at MidTV, and then it just followed from there. So, we're, we're so grateful, and there has been so much support. I'm going to show you where folks are from. All right, we'll try again. There we go. So, mapped our supporters, and this actually is not everybody, because when we first started taking pledges online, we were just asking for emails, and I don't have street addresses. But looking at everybody, we've got 73% come from the three zip codes that are Romeo, Bruce, and Washington, 48065, 48094, and the 48095. And something that's really important to us, it's not just, you can see the green, for the green space in the middle, it's not just the people that live next to it. It's within that one mile radius, people throughout the community. And then outside of, about 13% are from other Macomb County communities, 5% from Oakland County, 10% from other Michigan communities, and 7% from other states, one from the UK. And so, the support is very nicely focused among the people that will be using the green space in the future with their families, but has a broad base of support. Yeah, so you can see, see where everybody is at, and we're, you know, it grows every day. See if I have another. And then those are, that's who we have now, and Franco will talk about our future.
So, where's the green space going? Where's G-SOPS going? As you all know, about a year and a half ago, we started off as a concerned group of residents. And it's become obvious, it's become evident to us that we need to organize into a nonprofit organization. So, we'll be forming the Green Space Nonprofit, and we've already identified a board of directors, Chris Brewer, myself, Donna, Sarah Casper, Brian Mitten, Kim Boss. Responsibilities to include just strategic financial management, insurance liability, as well as overall management of nonprofit. We've also identified several members who have interest in participating in the listed committees here, and they'll just be in charge of maintaining all the various aspects that the green space will require as it operates and is a part of our community.
Can I add a detail about that?
Sure.
You know, the arboretum, where one of our goals is for the property to be a certified arboretum. And that brings obligations for structure and management, and that provides some really good guidelines as moving into the future.
All right, why does this place matter to us? Looking at all the folks that are involved, that we talked about the numbers and the percentages, what is everybody's motivation for caring about this place? Well, one is just a lot of alumni, people who have gone to school here, people who are thinking about their kids going to school in the district, and just having a personal history. We've got one of our, one of our members, Sue Weir, who's in the audience here, has been collecting stories for folks, and we're also now collecting stories. Elizabeth Miller is collecting stories from folks on social media, which is really brings a lot of energy and a lot of emotion about how much people care. Another reason is interest in the community history, and this being a place to honor and to communicate the history of our community as well as the history of the site. A big one is neighbors, people within walking distance who are really interested in the concept of a quiet nature park, a place to walk, a place to relax, and a place for their kids to play. And then also, an equally large or larger interest in the nature restoration, pollinators, the sustainable concepts, and outdoor education. People that are really excited about getting their hands dirty and, you know, working on the arboretum and the tree planting and the native restoration. So, those are, those are the four kind of primary motivations that we see. And another reason why we care, today happens to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. And when we, when we discuss land, especially public land, it's a practice now to start that discussion with the recognition of people who are stewards of this land long before the industrial era. That's what this slide is. Our Oakland County historian, who came over to Macomb County, because we're all connected, crafted this acknowledgement for G-SOPS, which I will read out loud. "The land we call 297 Prospect Street resides on the ancestral traditional and contemporary lands of the Anishinaabe known as the Three Fires Confederacy comprised of the Ojibwe, Odawan, Parawa. Evidence of a native presence on and near this land includes its location along the significant native trail and in Anishinaabe village that once existed nearby." And you see on the left, the map from the archaeological atlas map back from 1931 showing the locations of mountains and settlements and trails. And then I'd also like to offer you a quote from the native author Robin Walker Kimmerer from her book Braiding Sweetgrass. "In the settler mind, land was property, real estate, capital. But to our people, it was everything: identity, the connection to our ancestors, the home of our non-human kinfolk, our pharmacy, our library, the source of all that sustained us." Which is really relevant to us now because, you know, in our work to acquire and preserve this land, we find that it has so much more richness than, you know, just a place to own. And then another reason, which we've touched on briefly before, is this land is our history. It's the history of our town. It's so many people's personal history. And you can see a diagram up there of all the buildings that have been on that property, starting with the Dickinson Institute back in, built in 1855. The high school was, original high school was built in 1885, and the Dickinson Institute was torn down at the same time. And then, as the new high school was built in 1927, added on to it, which you can see in the lower, see them both together in the lower-left photograph there. And then as all of the additions were made in the 60s, that's when the old high school was torn down. And then in the 70s, the gymnasium, the shop building. The Maples was a separate school, as you can see, it's photographed there, that was built around 1880, and that was pulled down in 1980. The Thompson Place, the right-of-way that is still held by the village, there's a photograph of it looking east towards Prospect Street. And then in 2021 was when the completion of the demolition took place.
So, the Recreation Master Plan for the area, the Washington, Bruce, Romeo Parks and Rec Master Plan, they have a five-year strategic master plan that focuses on the bullet points and the information on the left-hand side of the slide. Specifically, they want to expand the range of recreation facilities available, encourage development of community-wide parks, and provide neighborhood-level parks, both public and private. So, you can get an idea of the map here. The blue arrows were green space on Prospect Street would be, and the red pins are where existing parks areas of recreation already exist. So, it's important to note that G-SOPS will fit nicely into the priorities that the Washington, Bruce, Romeo Parks Recreation Master Plan have already outlined. And we really would be happy to add that to the portfolio.
Well, that, the blue blob there is a 10-minute walk to the green space.
Right.
All right, community benefits. There's lots of them, and I'll... So, if we're talking about health and equity, parks and green space promotes health and wellness, and it's, it's an equitable space where everybody can come to, kids play there. We can be quiet in nature, gather with other people, get the socialization that helps us be healthy. Green space, it brings us together, creates a community where people want to live. Fiscal responsibility. Communities with a lot of parks and green spaces are great places to live and work, and they attract businesses and workers. It has a positive impact on property values and tax revenue. And the green infrastructure services, you know, such as like the absorption of stormwater and various things, provides value and reduces the need for infrastructure. Sustainable and resilient, the type of green space we're talking about has native plants and trees that are best adapted to local conditions and are drought-resistant, filters stormwater runoff, slow it down before it enters a storm sewer, and creating habitat for a variety of birds and insects that benefits local architecture. And then there's just the cooling effect of planting trees. An arboretum, we'll fill that space with trees. Outdoor education. I mean, this land has had, has so much meaning to folks and memories. By preserving it, we are preserving a 175-years-long educational tradition. And educational experiences in the outdoors are just great for learners of all ages, either formal classes or casual visitors. And, you know, one of our main objectives is to serve that function.
So, which brings us to our kids. So, much like this Board of Education looks after the educational enrichment of our kids, G-SOPS is attempting to do something very similar. We'd also like to enrich our youth. This is our opportunity to give our kids and following generations a place of nature that is literally in their backyards. Simply put, I think we all know that our children are overwhelmed by social media and electronic devices nowadays, and they need this space now more than ever. This opportunity is truly once-in-a-lifetime, and once it's gone, we won't be able to bring it back and ensure that something like this can be given to our kids and next generations as a gift.
I just probably really like to talk about the Green Space Site Plan. I have a copy of. So, as you know well, there are three parcels. There's parcel one, is 3.5 acres, two smaller parcels, about a third to a half acre each, and then the Thompson Place right-of-way, which is held by the village. We have focused our site concept plan on the 3.5-acre parcel. It's enough space to do everything we want to do. Due to funding limitations, the need to consider contingencies, we are open to the option of selling parcel two and parcel three to help fund the acquisition. There may be other opportunities there. You know, there are folks that are interested in preserving a historic home that's slated for demolition. You know, other folks are interested too. So, it's, we're looking at keeping our focus on that 3.5-acre parcel. And our focus is very clear, creation of a public green space that promotes health, wellness, and equity. Tree planting, restoration, native habitats, and outdoor learning for all ages. And we feel like the positive community impacts of that will go well beyond the footprint of 297 Prospect Street. So, if you look at the map, it is keyed to various zones on the other side, which are listed up there. And don't worry, I'm not going to read it all through. But just very briefly, maintaining some moat-open space for kids to run around and play. You can do cool things, yoga classes and tai chi. And already, we see kids over there flying kites and, you know, playing pickup games and stuff. The arboretum, establishing a native tree canopy, canopina shrub layer. For, to be certified, we have to have a minimum of 25 types of woody plants. And an obligation of being a certified arboretum is to also have that education and volunteer opportunities. We're looking at restoring oak savanna, which is, you know, one of the main habitats that occurred in this area, also known as sort of like, you know, oak prairies and oak malls. And restoring that and part of it with moat paths to go through it, which is very cool with the tall grasses because it makes kind of like a tunnel. We have, Joe Young is an arborist who's a PhD candidate at MSU, and he's been working with us to develop his planning and identify the species. Bioswales, green stormwater infrastructure, as you know, we've got some major drainage issues there. And bioswales is a way to use sort of soft engineering to deal with those issues. And we've gotten some help from the Clinton River Watershed Council, and they're putting together with their consultants a design for rainstorm water infrastructure in the lower-right area. Pollinator gardens, lots of, lots for bees and the birds and the insects, and lots of nice flowers. A gathering space, an outdoor classroom, looking at that sort of focused in that upper part of the property. We want it to be accessible, so, you know, pathways leading into it that folks of all abilities can use. You know, potentially like a pavilion or, you know, a space that can be used for gathering it for a classroom. Nature play is one thing we're interested in, and there's a lot of different resources for that. And then points of interest. We would like to identify, we've suggested a few areas where you might have some interpretive signage, you might have like a QR code pointing you to resources on the web, but to help people independently to learn about the history and the science. And then we want it to be sustainable. We would strive for, you know, zero carbon emissions and, you know, use electric equipment and explore alternative energy, and then just amenities in general. Bents, tables, signage. And a lot of these later things like the amenities, building the gathering space, I mean, that would be a round of public input to see what people would really like to see there.
Okay, on to the milestones report. And this is, like I mentioned earlier, where we gathered all the questions that the board had for us and then broke them into three separate categories. So, first of which, first category was the fiscal situation. So, as we've mentioned, we've partnered with the Four County Community Foundation to be our fiduciary partner. We have gathered a lot of information through the help of Dr. Robinson to focus on a fair property market value with appraisals and development proposals that were delivered to the Board of Education a year and a half ago. Purchase price. So, we will be sending a letter of intent or a formal proposal to the board no later than November 1st via our legal representation. Our financial situation, I know Donna touched on a little bit earlier regarding how much we've raised in terms of pledges and donations, but our goal right now, I know we've talked about the $500,000 goal in the past, but we have raised that to $600,000 target. And that's specifically to make sure that we have an endowment in place as well to fund the first three years of operation, keeping the area mowed and what have you before we can actually start to build out. can actually start to build out. So with that, in order to reach that $600,000 goal, we've recently launched a new fundraising campaign that's focusing specifically on local businesses. And then we're also working with regional funders in process. Securing financing for the acquisition as well, so that's also in process.
I mean, we are working with a local bank to see what our options are.
Yep. So create the site development funding plan and timeline, so you guys have the map in front of you in terms of the site development plan, and then the timeline itself would all be contingent upon the availability of funds. So we're participating with the Four County right now to secure EPA grants, and if funded, we would execute our build-out within three years of the grant money being made available. And then we're also working with other grant programs to facilitate things like tree planting and development in some of the areas over the next several years as well. And then the long-term funding plan, build an endowment with Four County to meet the baseline maintenance needs, which Donna will cover here in a couple slides. Moving into the next category, the acquisition of the project, so confirmed partnerships. So who, who's going to be the landlord, who's buying, actually buying the land from the school district? So the initial acquisition would be with a partner nonprofit, with a subsequent transfer to the new GSOPs that we talked about earlier. And that confirmation's in progress. Commitment with the village, I know that's something that the board asked about earlier, what is our commitment from the Village of Romeo? So we have a resolution of support, but we are not pursuing partnership with the village in either owning or managing the property. Our team of advisors, we, we do have real estate advisor onboard, and we also have retained a legal representation. We're still researching our insurance and liability as it pertains to nonprofit, the board protection, what have you. Letter of intent, as I mentioned on the last slide, will be sent to the Board of Education no later than the 1st of November via our legal representation. And then the purchase agreement can be negotiated at that point in time.
So development and maintenance is like the third category that we've been reporting on every month. We just went over the development plan. And we've, you know, been through a few iterations of those, that, and we've also, you know, we've taken that to our community meetings and gotten input. And we did go to the village and have preliminary zoning and ordinance review to find out what we need to, you know, keep in mind and when we would need to go in front of planning commission. Phasing plan and preliminary budget, you see right there. This would be if, if, you know, if we had a large, you know, we're successful with the EPA grant and just we're building the thing out, estimating $855,000. Some of those are good hard numbers. The arboretum number three and four are, those are, those are good hard numbers. The active area, maintenance area, the $250,000 is a bit of a placeholder there because before we decide what goes in there, we need to have, you know, some public input. And then the bioswales and green stormwater infrastructure, we're, it's a ballpark estimate. We're still waiting for that, those final budget numbers from our consultant with the Watershed Council. But from my experience, you know, for building out a small park, this is a, this is a decent estimate. Those phasings are not necessarily sequential. I would imagine that if we did not have, you know, large funding right of way, we would start building out the arboretum and the savanna and the nature play and getting some amenities available to people right of way. And then as we've been looking at grants from foundation grants for acquisition, most are interested in funding development. So I've had a lot of conversations with funders that said, come back after you've got the property and we'll work with you on, on actually funding development. So maintenance plan, we're looking at $5,000 a year for very routine maintenance. Our, a lot of volunteer labor, we're expecting to have a fairly low-cost, low-maintenance situation. And then, but we want to make sure that we're prepared with a fund for the, you know, sort of non-routine things like the repairs to parking, hardscapes, and, you know, in the future lifecycle replacement costs, we will be planning for that. Our long-term strategic plan, we had an organizational meeting with the community about the arboretum, and that's how we gained a list of potential board members and folks who want to volunteer for various committees. So that's established, and we're working on our nonprofit status, getting that established now. And in conclusion, so we want to thank you for this opportunity. It's been quite a ride. And, you know, we're thrilled with where we are, and we're very grateful for the partnership of you and with, you know, so many people and organizations. To sum up, 297 Prospect Street is much more to us than a vacant field. They used to have buildings on it, and its value to community members is more than the money that, you know, will be exchanged when we, you know, hopefully this comes to fruition. We ask you to consider our proposal. We ask you to consider that Green Space on Prospect Street is an opportunity to create a legacy that builds on your long history of educational community investment and partnership, and creating a public space that will nourish the earth and that our community will cherish well into the future.
So just to leave you with what's next. To end with, as Donna mentioned, we do have the opportunity of a lifetime here to leave a legacy for our children and the generations to follow. The Board of Education has provided GSOPs with a tremendous opportunity, and we've also made a tremendous effort over the last year and a half to make good on this opportunity. So within the next two weeks, you will be able to expect that our attorney will be sending a letter of intent or a formal offer for the purchase of 297 Prospect Street.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions. One is revisiting a question that I had from the summer. My question back then, and you probably have a lot more knowledge about it now, was when, you know, when we get grants, nothing comes like that without strings attached. So you mentioned the EPA, and then you said other grants. Who are the other grants and what are the strings attached, or the things that will be put on the community burdens in order to get the money?
Referring specifically to the EPA grant, I mean, there were, we would, we would expect a commitment that whatever we build out with that would remain in place, and we would, you know, have, have the structure and the funding in place to continue to maintain it. Outside of that, there would be no, I think, I mean, I recall the question. You know, there would be no increased tax burden or any obligation outside of that space.
You mentioned zero emissions, though. When you start talking that language, that usually comes with some kind of government stipulation that might fall on the businesses or local village. I just don't-
Only, only the site itself. Yeah. And that would be, I mean, that is, that is not an obligation of this grant, but that is our, our goal to, you know, manage the space in the most sustainable manner possible.
You mentioned, I read through your notes that you sent out last week to the board, and you mentioned selling parcels. So is your intent to purchase this land from the district and then turn around and sell parcels?
We, we want, that is a consideration in order to manage to actually fulfill this because we do not, probably do not have the funds to buy, to retain all three parcels. So that's why we focused on the 3.5-acre parcel.
And then my last-
Wait, can I clarify that part? So my following then, your plan is to only put an offer on the other part?
No, we plan to put an offer on the entire property, the three parcels. I mean, we are understanding that you do not want to do a piecemeal. Yeah, so.
My last question, I mean personally, who will, who will take care of this? I know you've mentioned, you know, the maintenance cost every year, but who does that fall on? You know, you mentioned volunteers, but volunteers tend to go away after a while. So does it, does it fall on the village? Like, kind of speak to that a little bit.
We are forming a nonprofit that has a structure, and that's also one of the purposes of, of the arboretum certification. So there's support there with, you know, with training and, and some obligations for us having the structure to maintain it into the future. Our plan is to, we will organize ourselves and continue to build our, you know, community to support, to maintain this as a beautiful space in perpetuity. And there are other models, you know, Dinosaur Hill, nature preserve in Rochester is, well, that's actually on public land, but it's run by a nonprofit. Royal Oak, actually Fred Herb Arboretum. I mean, there's, I think that Dinosaur Hill's been around for 50 years. The Fred Herb Arboretum has been around, been around for about 30. So there are a lot of models that are successful.
I have, I just want to clarify. So you mentioned $600,000 as your purchase price. That was your goal, 600?
That is our fundraising target.
Your fundraising target, okay.
Yeah, and that is, I guess, one of the things we're not doing tonight is actually, you know, making an offer.
Of course you're not, of course not. No, because we wouldn't be able to do that. So sold it, so, okay, so $600,000 is your fundraising goal, of which you have $377,000 pledged slash donated, of which you have $16,000 actual cash. So if you took this 600,000 and then added your 855,5 over three years for your build-out, the estimated need would be 1.5 million. Is that right?
The build-out-
Over three years is what?
That is if it was fully funded. And it won't necessarily, we don't know if it will be fully funded. But it's very, it's, it's very feasible to build it out slowly, to start with planting trees and, you know, getting the smaller grants to, you know.
So theoretically, this could take decades, really?
Probably not decades, but it could take 10 years to build it out completely, you know. But it would be, it would be maintained in the meantime. We would be planting trees, we would be-
So my question is, have you already applied for grants, and what are those timelines?
Applied for grants for-
You hadn't mentioned purchasing with grant funds. So does that align with the, the timing that we're looking for? Like, you'll already know if you've received the grants?
No, there, there may be grants that would be coming in at a later time.
So really, you're not purchase, planning to purchase the property using grants? Well, one's saying yes, one's saying no. Don't you answer the answer.
Hold on, you're saying no, we're not planning on using grant money to purchase.
But we can continue to bring grant funds in to fund the acquisition at least.
Right, but that would be between you and your nonprofit. We'd be out by that time.
Yeah.
And then you had mentioned that there was this Parks and, like a master plan, but at the same time, the village is not interested in partnering. So how do they have a master plan but also don't want to partner?
That's the Bruce Washington Romeo Parks and Recreation, five-year master plan. So that's for the whole, the three communities.
So that's more based on recreation than what you guys then-
Yeah, no, the language we quoted is facilities. I mean, the importance of that to us is, you know, they do their, they do their public engagement, they follow a process, and it's a statement of what the community, what the community needs for recreation and recreation facilities. And we, what is being proposed for this property is something that doesn't exist right now. You know, we've got active recreation, we've got event space, we've got trail access, but not something that is nature-based.
What is the guarantee that you're only going to sell two parcels of this? Why, why land on 3.5? If you can't afford your build-out in an appropriate timeframe, how would we know that you wouldn't sell off more to developers? Because these two parcels will be sold to developers, or a developer, or somebody that's going to develop it.
Well, right now, I mean, that is a, that is a consideration that we may need to do that. And we want to make sure that we're upfront about that. I would say as part of that negotiation, what is that guarantee? We would need to talk about that. We certainly, we certainly have no intent to do that, and we could, you know, we'll discuss it to make sure that you're confident in that.
Well, we never thought that these two parcels would be sold out in the beginning of this, so it's just like as things evolve, you know.
Yeah, no understandable concern.
And then the rezoning. So we have, we have developer residential zoning that would have to take place, and then we would have sort of a green space park. I'm not even sure what kind of zoning that would-
R1, it's, it's zone to R1, and it, we, it can be rezoned with a, what's it called? Special land use for recreation.
And that's done by the village? Are they, I mean, I'm sure you guys have talked with them. Are they willing to do that?
That's, we, we met with the planner about that, and that would be making a presentation, you know, to the, to the planning commission.
That sparks another question, if I could piggyback onto that. So I, if you're, if you're coordinating with the village, is the coordination with them, is your intent to do that after you would acquire the land or before? Like, has the village given you any sense of what partnership they may or may not have up to this point?
Our understanding of the village is that it just is not something that they're able to entertain right now. I mean, we are open to future, you know, partnerships with, you know, local community, the village, Bruce Township. I mean, we will always be looking for productive partnerships. Or Parks and Rec also, as a partnership for maintenance, we would love to offer it as a facility for their programming.
Excuse me, I wasn't going to ask you a question, but I'm going to ask a question, and you heard it when we met before, but I just want to ask it because I think there's some connection here. In terms of the Thompson Place right of way, have you had any conversation with the village in terms of, you know, special use permit that you've explained to Vicki and myself, and the vacation of, of that easement to expand your potential partial?
I would say we would broach that, you know, after we own the property. Yeah. I mean, and in the meantime, if, if they are, you know, still are not planning to abandon it, we would, we would be happily moat for them and just have it be more open space for kids to run around in.
Are there any other questions from the board? I know that our plan is also we can continue submitting questions both through Dr. Robinson and to our legal counsel, because I believe the next step is for legal to speak to legal. Correct, yeah. So we have some work ahead of us and certainly plenty of time to continue to ask any questions that we might need.
We appreciate your discussion.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Balik, I think maybe we take a five-minute break. We're going to move a couple tables in here just for our construction friends and that for the rest of our discussion.
All right, we'll come back at 6:25.